Good evening. Welcome to the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for July 18th, 2016. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to meet as commissioners to do the county's work. Give us the knowledge to do what's best for our citizens. We pray for both domestic and international peace. We ask for the ceasing of violence across the world. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, we'll move to the public comment session. One person has signed up to speak, Denny King.
Hope everyone's doing well today. I'm Denny King, and late last year several county leaders proposed bringing in the regional recycling solutions into our community in Beverdame. The facility would process 25 tons of waste per hour. And I'm here tonight to ask a couple of questions and discuss the closed minutes that has been released. The minutes reflect there are 40-seat theater room for the public school system. On November the 2nd, Mr. Francis, in the closed minute meetings noted that all phases for the project are still under discussion. He said there would be some contaminated material coming into the facility initially in order to jumpstart the operations and will be phased out during the first year. November, uh... November the 2nd was the first time contaminated materials were mentioned in the redacted closed minutes. What kind of contaminated material was going to be hauled into the Beverdame community? Why was the public not told that this would be coming? And why did, uh... Why was the public told that this would be a clean facility? The Mountaineer indicated that Allison didn't rule out considering coming to Haywood, to the Haywood County site later. And during the November 16th Commissioners Meeting, Kevin Ensley was discussing regional solutions, and he said, "This was simply what I saw in Kansas. This plant that I saw in Kansas, I wouldn't mind it being near my home." Michael and I discussed it, and he wouldn't have a problem if the facility was near his home. You know, I don't know what this material was, but in order to jumpstart a business, it seems like it would have to be very expensive to get rid of. So we would like to know in the Beverdame community what this material was and why we weren't told anything about it. And I'd appreciate if maybe one of you would, would let me know that. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else present who would care to comment? Then to constituent concerns. Bill, do you have anything? Kirk?
Just have folks talking to me about the animal.
I've had a lot of positive comments as well.
I didn't say positive, but I've had people talking to me about it.
Kevin?
I just wanted to comment about the paving at Paragon Parkway that I had requested at our work session, and I just wanted to say that, you know, they were paving on that out there, and they were able to get that paved, and it's really nice. And I appreciate our staff jumping on that. I think within a couple of weeks that we talked about we were able to get that done. And it's really made that entrance a lot more attractive and a lot smoother and able for, um... And I have had somebody contact and thank me for it, so I just wanted to mention that and thank the staff for their work on that.
Michael?
I've talked to Ar about a couple of things that he's looking into today and, you know, and of course continuing discussions with the people about the animal, et cetera.
Okay. Then we'll move to administrative and agency reports. We have Lisa Davis with us, um, with the Health and Human Services Agency. She's the Director of Nursing, and she's going to present information regarding the Child Futility Prevention Team. Welcome, Lisa.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present the report for our Haywood County Child Futility Prevention Team. As you know, child fatality prevention teams are mandated in the state of North Carolina in all, for all counties, and ours has been in existence since 1995. We review the deaths of children, Haywood County residents, from birth through the age of 17 to, uh, to develop a community-wide approach to the problem of child abuse and neglect, to understand the causes of childhood deaths, and to identify any gaps or services in the delivery of services by agencies that are designed to prevent future child abuse, neglect, or death. And then we also make recommendations and take actions based on our findings to try to prevent future deaths. The review process includes a delay of approximately one year after the date of death, so we can get all review materials ready for that. Just the review information, we meet four times a year. In 2013, we had six deaths. Two, as far as the causes, were undetermined. One was suicide, one was motor vehicle accident, one was a medical condition from birth, and then one was extreme prematurity from birth. 2014, we had four deaths. The causes were one congenital birth defect, two were medical conditions, and then one, extreme prematurity at birth. 2015, we jumped a little bit to eight deaths, unfortunately. There were three that were undetermined. One was a motor vehicle accident, and four were caused by extreme prematurity. And then 2016, so far we have three. And since I have submitted this report for your review, I have become aware unfortunately of one more death of a teenager within the past couple of weeks. For 2016, one, we're still waiting the pending cause of death. One was based on congenital birth defect, and then one was a medical condition at birth. And we make recommendations, and I just wanted to review those quickly with you. We make those to the State Child Fatality Coordinator, and they have included unrestrained motor vehicle drivers and occupants, unlicensed drivers, and excessive speed that have been identified in factors in some of Haywood County's adolescent deaths. We've also identified unsafe sleep environments that include co-sleeping or bed sharing with infants that have possibly contributed to Haywood County's infant deaths. In general, our team's findings and recommendations have addressed and supported safe driver or driving practices, initiatives, and motor vehicle occupant education. Existing agencies, programs, and initiatives for the prevention of childhood trauma and promotion of childhood safety. The concept of routine drug screenings in North Carolina for pregnant women and newborns. Reinstating the postnatal assessment and follow-up care and newborn care and assessment home visiting program. And then also safe sleep initiatives for the prevention of sudden unexplained infant death and sudden infant death syndrome. And then I have described a couple of initiatives, one being the Micah Rayland Foundation. That wasn't actually directly related to our efforts with Child Fatality Team, however, this foundation was started, and it's very noteworthy because it was initiated by a mother, Candace Boone, who lost her baby to death. She was four years, or four months old. And she has started this foundation to promote education among parents, to reduce the risk of infant mortality. And the work that this foundation is doing is to be commanded. She and the foundation have begun to provide grief packages to all the local funeral homes for parents who lose children to death, and then also a welcome package that is going to be given out at the hospital to parents with safe sleep information. Then also Patrick Johnson, our Public Health Services Division, has worked tirelessly to get some funding through the Women's Health Branch for improving the community outcomes for maternal and child health. These are non-recurring funds, but it has allowed us to purchase 100 pack-and-plays for parents that are needy and don't have a safe place for their babies to sleep. And then also it is enabling us to buy contents for the grief packages and for the welcome baby packages that are going to be given to new parents. So we're very thankful for that. And then also, Mr. Johnson published an article in the Mountaineer on February 26th about population health, and then also we included information in there about safe sleep practices that are endorsed through the American Academy of Pediatrics. I would like to say that even with our findings, that in April of 2016, the North Carolina Child Fatality Task Force had notified us, among other things, that they are monitoring issues that address the North Carolina Drivers Education Program, legislation pertaining to substance-exposed newborns, supporting legislation for primary enforcement of unrestrained backseat passengers, and to endorse funding to increase the number of school nurses in North Carolina. So we're pleased with, with the efforts that they are making. And that's all I have. Again, I thank you so much for the opportunity to present this report. Will entertain any questions that you may have at this time.
How do we stand per capita compared to the rest of the state or nationally, if you know?
We're actually much lower than, of course, it depends on the size of the county. And in smaller counties, there are lower numbers of child deaths. We have remained consistent from four to seven or eight per year, as long as I have been the chairperson for child fatality. And then in larger counties, of course, there's more. But I would dare say, I mean, I don't know the percentage, but we do have a low death rate as far as childhood deaths.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I do have one, which would be on item four of new business. It's going to be an additional call, be a call to public hearing for that grant application. Sheriff's Office was advised, I believe, on Friday that that would be required, so we've, want to add that if there's no objection. Anyone else have anything? We'll move to the consent agenda. We've had the opportunity to review the June 20th, 2016, regular meeting minutes. Are there corrections to those? Not, we'll move to Judy Hickman with refunds, releases, amendments, and discoveries.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just like to request approval for the refunds, releases, adjustments, and discoveries for June. There's not anything to report outside of normal business practice.
We had the opportunity to review those independently. Is there any questions or comments from Commissioners? Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Move next to a tax collections update, Mike Matthews.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Evening.
We have closed out June, excuse me, at 96.97. That is a total of 37,371,000. That's up about, well, last year we collected, we were at 35,340,000. So in total, we did 38,611,000. That's what the delinquents and the delinquents in there were, 1.16 million, 1.116.
The percent of collection dropped slightly by quarter point.
0.26, yeah.
Yeah. Any, is that just an anomaly?
Honestly, I have no idea. Tracy and I are going through it now, trying to figure out if there was something that we missed or whatnot, but I don't see anything. We still, you know, over the, we had a great year last year, and then still this year was, still we're pleased with how it went this year.
Any other questions? Anybody have?
It leaves us about 2 million in total delinquents from back to 2008 about what we have left on delinquents on the table to still collect.
That would probably be the area that you probably need, you may have one, a plan to...
We do. I talked to Laura back in June, said this meeting was going to be kind of full, and then last meeting was full, so we were planning on maybe having a detail of what we're going to, what our plan is going forward in August, so.
Would that include the motor vehicles, what you're going to do to collect those now that, because we, I see that there's quite a bit left.
We still collect, I mean, the motor vehicles that have been passed through. We still do go after those. A lot of those are so small, it kind of doesn't, they get written off at some point, and then what we have to do, the money we spend on them to collect them almost doesn't really make a whole lot of sense on the smaller ones. But we still include those when, our bills that we're sending out and that sort of thing. But to send the sheriff out for something that's, you know, $40 or that sort of thing, kind of.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay, the fourth and last item on the consent agenda is our revisions to the Haywood County Health and Human Services Board bylaws and operating procedures. Stoney Blevins.
Good evening, Commissioners. I bring a recommendation from the Health and Human Services Board. Back in the spring, the Board had an annual retreat, and one of the things they did is look at their operating procedures to see if they wanted to make some minor changes to make them more efficient. And there's really two major changes being proposed to the operating procedures. One is to simply change the term of the Chair and the Vice Chair to two years instead of one, and that allows for a little more continuity in those positions. As you know, chairman position is very important. And the other one really was to take five subcommittees and condense them down to four. And so we had to change quite a few of the bylaws to get those five to reflect four. And those are the two major changes in the document.
Okay. I'm on that board, and with the exceptions noted by Stoney, the remainder were basically just housekeeping-type matters that, after the board had been in existence for a while, it became apparent which ones were needed and which ones weren't.
Exactly.
Right. So, any questions on those? Okay. Thank you, Stoney.
Thanks.
I think that concludes the consent agenda. At this point, would entertain a motion that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
So move.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you. If we don't have any old business, we'll move to new business. And the first item is a request from the Sawonook Volunteer Fire Department, Julie Davis.
Good afternoon. We have a couple of members from the Sawonook Volunteer Fire Department here to make a request of you to approve for them to enter into a seller financed mortgage to buy some property that actually surrounds the property that they own right now. And they have had a public hearing, and they have submitted their financial statements to me, and in reviewing them, it does look like they are going to be able to afford this new borrowing. It's actually going to be about 70,000 per year they're borrowing, or they're buying some property for 350,000. They're putting 70,000 down, and they're financing 280,000. And the reason it looks like they can afford this is they have just paid off a note that was a little over 81,000. I think they paid over 100,000 on it this past year. So it looks like they can afford this, and they're here. We've got Daniel Hyatt and Dan McClure that are going to come tell you a little bit about what they're doing as far as buying the property, fill you in on all the details and answer any questions that you might have regarding this.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Daniel Hyatt. I'm the Treasurer, Sawonook Volunteer Fire Department. Dan McClure is with me. He's the Vice President. We appreciate your consideration this evening, and we look forward to this purchase. As you may or may not know, our little parcel of land was donated to the department in 1962. It consists of approximately two tenths of an acre, of which the vast majority is, houses the building. That's pretty well all we have. Parking's an issue, as you might imagine, particularly given that we're a polling station, so it's a chaotic scene often in November. Additionally, the septic drain field, which serves our property, is actually on the parcel we're hoping to buy. It's, it's been there forever. And so, you know, we anticipate going forward some, some problems with it with no reasonable solution. So this would, this would remedy that, that issue. The property is approximately four acres, a fair amount of which is in the, in the floodway and floodplain. It does border the DOT right-of-way. That said, the remainder of the parcel is, is fairly usable and would serve our department well and the community well. We appreciate your consideration. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
If the property were sold to somebody else and they decided they didn't want you all parking on their property, that would create an issue for you, wouldn't it?
It would indeed create an issue.
Any questions or comments?
Did you get an appraisal of the area?
No, sir. We did not. We did not.
So is John an owner, or is...
Well, we, it is. We had approached him, I think, three or four years back, hoping just to buy the back portion of the property on which our drain field is located. And at that time, he wasn't interested in settling just a portion. And so, you know, we felt like, once we paid the ladder truck off that, that we had recently purchased, we felt like we were in a position to do that at this time, and so we approached him.
Now, the tax rate there is only five, five cents? Is that right?
Yes, sir. I believe it's one of the lowest.
Should harder times come, you've got some room to move upward.
Yes, sir.
If you, if you needed to. And Julie is satisfied with the...
Yes. I'm satisfied. It does appear that they'll be able to afford this loan. It certainly does.
Okay. Kirk?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. I will need to abstain from this. Generally, when I have represented the fire departments in the past, the, the contractual negotiations had already passed, and then I handled the closing. On this particular transaction, I actually prepared the contract and did do some of the work on the contractual negotiations, so I would need to abstain from this and will be handling it. And actually, when I looked at it when they brought it in, I was really, I was surprised that that fire department owned just that little footprint, because every time anybody goes to park or put up, do anything out there, you're on somebody else's property.
Yeah.
Unless you're just driving in, because if you park anywhere around that place, you're, you're not on the fire department property.
Yeah, I drove up and looked at it, and it's, it's clear that there's not sufficient space for anything, really.
Not much of anything, no, sir.
So.
And I think when I was looking even at the price of it, and, and of course, that they didn't, there's not necessarily an appraisal of it, but when you have land that's located on the bypass and on Old Balsam Road, you know, you're going to, going to pay a little bit more for that. And of course, you have to weigh that against, what are we going to do, relocate the entire fire department and also build another fire department? So I think if you can use factors, those things in, this is a wise decision that they're making. But, but I am abstaining. You guys make the decisions.
Okay. Mike, do you have any comments?
That sounds, you know, I mean, I understand the situation they're in, and like you said, if they had to go do something else, the cost would be quite more.
Indeed.
And, you know, just always want to be sure that you're in good shape and, and you've probably got other needs that's going to come down the pike and be prepared for that.
That's right. Thank you.
Kevin?
I'm just wondering, is there, if there's another fire department?
Where, with a smaller land situation, two tenths of an acre?
For a while, Feins Creek was in that situation. They've been trying to accumulate adjoining areas for playgrounds for kids and for parking and shelter and that sort of thing. So you need some room to do things.
Exactly. And you mentioned drain field. That's very important.
It is.
Very important.
The buildings that are located on the property?
There, there is a, a small building. It's currently a greenhouse office.
It's the landscaping company up there, right?
Right, right.
Okay. Okay, then if there's no further questions or discussion, would entertain a, a motion that the Sawonook Volunteer Fire Department be allowed to enter into the purchase agreement as described? Approximately 4.1 acres?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Entertain that motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And of course, the minutes will reflect that Kirk was, did not vote.
Thank you a lot.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Jeff Haynes with the Sheriff's Office for some vehicle bids. Jeff?
Good evening, Commissioners. First on the agenda tonight, we were looking for the approval of the lowest responsible, responsive responsible bidder, giving the best value to the, to the Sheriff's Office based upon the RFP that was sent out for our, our annual purchase of vehicles to continue the continuity that we have with the rotation of patrol cars. That bidder came out to be Fairway Ford of Evans, Georgia, in the total amount of 200,288.90 for seven vehicles.
Okay. Any questions of Jeff? Michael?
I'm just kind of looking at the, let's see. Well, I didn't, you know, you had gotten a local bid from Ken Wilson Ford, and it sounds like that he was, that they were outbid, so.
We did. We got a, a local bid from Ken Wilson Ford, but basically the, the wiring harnesses that have to be put in place, Ken Wilson Ford was, there was conversation and dialogue back with them and their sales representative as well. But for them to, to meet that bid of, the, the original bid they put in was 28,607 dollars per vehicle, but then it would, it would cost an additional 452 dollars per vehicle to add those additional wiring harnesses in, which would total 29,059 dollars per vehicle, when the original bid that came from Fairway Ford was 28,612.70, which is a difference of $5. Difference between the two with a 450 dollar, or 447 dollar difference in equipment that would have to be furnished.
So even though Ken Wilson was slightly less, it did not include something that you had to have, and when you went back to them, then that was going to push the bid up over...
That is correct. And that, that additional 452 dollars would, are wires and wiring harnesses for the electronics for the vehicle that would have to be added regardless, and it pushed that total bid for them to 29,059 dollars even.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Are we exempt, is the county exempt from, isn't there a tax or a fee you have to pay when you buy a vehicle in another state and then register here in North Carolina? There's not?
I mean, you know, like, I can go to Tennessee and buy a car and not pay any tax because I'm going to register in North Carolina, and I come back to North Carolina and pay it.
And you don't have to pay a fee here?
No.
I just want to make sure there's not some fee we're not aware of.
I'm, I'm not aware of. I'm not sure.
I'm not aware of a fee. We do pay a tax when we get the license plate with the DMV, and we'll pay that in North Carolina.
No matter what.
But we would still have to pay that if we purchase it from someone in North Carolina? No additional fee?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I'm just checking. I don't know for certain. I'm not making that.
Yeah, but, and just to clarify, but you, you went back to Ken Wilson, and they could not provide that for that price?
That is correct. There was a series of, there was a dialogue, email conversation between our finance office and, and their representative, and the last one that, that came from that clearly stated that with that, it would cost an additional 452 dollars to, to complete that required piece of, of what we needed anyway. So we either go with the lower bid of $5 less and pay the 452 on top of it to get that done, or go ahead with the lower bid, so it was, it was certainly a more fiscally responsible move from the county.
Any other questions? If not, would entertain a motion that Fairway Ford of Evans, Georgia be awarded the, as low bidder and lowest responsive responsible bidder for the purchase of seven vehicles for the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. that we accept that bid in the amount of two hundred thousand, two hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents.
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, okay. And I guess we're staying with you?
Yes, sir, at the request of the Sheriff.
Okay.
In the back of the row. The next item up is our renewal of our medical contract that provides inmate medical health care for our detention center with Transform Health. It is an annual contract this year in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars to be paid for out of budgeted funds. This is with an increase of service time and staffing, which will increase our efficiency as well too, to a seven-day-a-week opportunity for, I think, fifty-six hours of service per week and biannual, or biweekly, mental health care as well too, which has become an increased cost to the county as well.
Any questions of Jeff? This is an annual contract. Anybody have any questions? Okay, if not, then would entertain a motion that the contract with Transform Health for inmate health care services in the detention center in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars be approved.
So move, I just want to make comment, we do have to do this, so.
Yeah, it's required, yeah. Okay. And if I could add to that, to that motion, that we would authorize the county manager to sign that contract when approved. So, we have a motion, we have a second? Just my second?
Yes.
Second? Okay. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Okay, next is the, the fourth item regarding the Sheriff's Office is a grant application. You want to explain what's going on, Jeff?
Yes, the next item on the list is a, is an Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, better known as a JAG grant, for the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars. That's what Haywood County is eligible for. This particular grant, basically, a quick narrative would be to provide officers with custom fitted, informed fitted vests, ballistic bulletproof vests. This will allow officers to move and perform more effectively and efficiently, and obviously, the biggest part being safer. We routinely rotate out as part of our equipment rotation vests, ballistic vests, and this would not replace equipment funding, but only supplement so that we could rotate out more this year than we normally do, the ones that were outdated or close to expiration as well too. What I am requesting is, is also, obviously, the governing board review. The application deadline was June thirtieth for submission, it was submitted, but requesting a review by this board and then also a public hearing as well too.
Yeah, I'll call for that in a minute. Okay. Okay, any questions of Jeff on body armor? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion that the application from the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program for ballistic body armor in the amount of ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars, that that grant application is approved for submission. Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And as Jeff mentioned, and they learned late in the week, last week, that a public hearing is required by the grantor. So at this point, I'll call for a public hearing on August fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at five thirty PM in this room. Okay, Jeff, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the fifth item is the annual support and maintenance renewal for Tyler Technologies for the Munis Financial System. Lori Tomlin, Lori?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here to ask your approval for the annual support and maintenance renewal for Tyler Technologies for our maintenance, for, excuse me, our Munis Financial System software. The annual fee for that is seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and it will be paid for with budgeted funds.
Okay. Any questions here? We have to have the system, right Julie?
We really do need the system.
Okay, if there's no questions, then would entertain a motion that the annual support and maintenance renewal for Tyler Technologies for the Munis Financial System be approved.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. Thank you, Lori. Next up is a question for recycling. David Francis, our Solid Waste Administrator.
Good evening, Commissioners, hope everybody's doing very well. Before you have two contracts, one with the Department of Environmental Quality and an interlocal agreement between the county and the town of Maggie. This grant came about last year. Several times, our processor who processes the recyclables had to shut down numerous times due to some inefficiencies over there. They could not process the bags, and the machines got clogged up. So what we started discussing here was a way that we could help eliminate those bags and where it would not slow down the processing of that material. And through that grant, I wrote the grant with that, with the town of Maggie's cooperation, that they would be a pilot program to start a cart program for pickup along the residential route. And so what we requested is the ninety-six gallon bins that will be able to be rolled out by the residents to be picked up when their, I think their trash is picked up one day and the recyclables picked up another day. And part of that is that the bins will hold loose field, you will not put bags in there anymore to help eliminate that. And they've got cooperation for next year, two thousand and seventeen, to pursue a grant for the town of Canton and Clyde, and we're still working with Waynesville about getting that grant done. So what this will help do is eliminate bags, and we'll be moving through this process over the next two to three years to where all of our municipalities will hopefully, will move to a cart system, and we'll eliminate bags through there. Also, part of the grant is also thirty-five hundred bins for county residents, which will be more of a tote size that will be able to fit in the backseat of a car that will pass out in more of the rural communities as opposed to the Hazelwood, Moonee Cove, those areas where we, a lot of people, residents, still have pickup. So with this grant, we have twenty thousand dollars coming from the state for that. The town of Maggie has agreed to reimburse the county for the difference in the process of the carts in the amount of about thirty, excuse me.
Thirty-four, six?
Thirty-four, yeah, thirty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty, yeah. So we've got a lot of good cooperation from the state and through the town of Maggie Valley. Nathan's been very, you know, a good point in getting this done, and has been very essential in helping getting this done. So, like, before you, the contract for the state to receive the reimbursement, and then the town, interlocal agreement, the county, we'll have some budgeted funds that we already budgeted for this year for this program of about thirty-six hundred dollars.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I just wanted to make a comment, you know, when we were in Lawrence, Kansas, Michael and I, that's what they, that's what they did. They had separate recycling, and that material, when it came in, wasn't contaminated. Came in, it was just clean, I mean, it was, I mean, you know, it's, there probably some nasty milk jugs and stuff. Otherwise, it was just, it was just like leaves laying there on the floor, if you will. It was real, it wasn't lead or anything like that. But what they did was they picked up those containers, well, like what Maggie's gonna be using, and they dumped them into the truck, and then it was loose and there was no bags. And that's what regional recycling solutions, he was gonna have a bag opener to eliminate that if we'd, if we had gotten that facility here, and that would have really helped the recycling efforts and helped our land field. But that's what they did in Lawrence, Kansas, and that's a college town, you know, and that's what, that's the way they did that. So I'm glad to hear that Maggie Valley's doing this and that we're gonna be able to have something here at home, because I'll definitely get one of those.
Yeah.
In fact, I dropped off my recyclables today, but it was in a bag.
Yeah, and that's causing a problem for our processor. You know, we, you know, had a great solution for a lot of things there, and there was, there was no illegal contamination. When the word I use contamination is there's a little bit of waste in there. There's a little bit of waste being processed over there at our processor as well. And when we say contamination, we're talking about just general waste, nothing hazardous, nothing biohazard, anything like that. Nothing egregious like that that would send anybody's radar eyebrows up.
Yeah.
So, just fodder.
David, a lot of counties, I noticed, going to the big roadside trash cans, you say ninety-six gallon?
Ninety-six gallon, correct.
Of loosely fit and then, and no bags in those containers, right?
Correct, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So the truck comes by and.
Yeah, the service provider for Maggie Valley already has the tipper in place, and that was one of the reasons we're able to move a little bit faster here. Canton and Clyde has another service provider that will need to get the tipper in place, but we've talked, we've been discussing that with him, and he's willing to add that too. So we may be helping that service provider acquire the tipper in next year's grant, and then the towns pick up the bin, the cost of the carts in that situation, so.
Anything else? If not, then would entertain a motion that the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality contract an interlocal agreement with the town of Maggie Valley for recycling carts and bins be approved. The county's share of the cost would be three thousand, six hundred dollars after grants and Maggie Valley's contribution.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you. All right, the last item, Ira, is designate a voting delegate for the annual conference of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
Yes. We captured two approvals on the last one, that was the question for Mr. Francis, one for the interlocal and one for the. On the last vote, there were two approvals, one for the interlocal and one for the, that both were captured in the vote.
I can't understand what you're saying. I mean, I'm a little bit vacillating, I literally cannot understand.
Okay. The, there is two contracts there, one from the Department of Environmental Quality and the one to approve the interlocal agreement between the county and the town. And I just, I don't know if I heard the motion was for both of them or one same. I just, okay.
Both of them.
Both of them at the same time, okay, thank you. I just didn't hear that as well too, sorry.
Okay, Ira.
Yes, for the upcoming NCACC, which is the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, one hundred and ninth meeting, when they get to their business session on Saturday, they request a voting delegate. And Commissioner Upton has volunteered to do that.
I understand Bill has volunteered to attend that conference, represent our board, and.
I love hot weather.
There you go, okay. And you would consent to be the voting delegate as well? Okay. Then would entertain a motion that Bill Upton be designated the voting delegate for Haywood County at the one hundred and ninth annual conference of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners.
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Thanks, Bill.
I voted for myself, so I'm all right.
Yeah. Okay, that concludes our agenda. At this point, would entertain a motion to enter into closed session for attorney-client privilege, one forty-three, three one eight point one one A three, and economic development, one forty-three, three one eight point one one A four. Entertain that motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, we're in closed session. We have returned from closed session, is there additional business for the board? Hearing none, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned.